All right, sorry about the delay, everybody. The meeting is being livestreamed, I just got a notice. I'm gonna call this scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors, East Goshen Township for Tuesday, June 8th. As our long-range and Marty, will you lead us in the pledge?
I'm gonna run right through that real fast. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Marty. Michelle, you'll lead us in a moment of silence?
Yes, please join me in keeping our first responders in thought and prayer this evening as they fight a lot of water rescues in Chester County. Thank you, thanks, special thanks to our Public Works Department.
Yep, all right, this is a pretty much a one-agenda item meeting, and that's the presentation and discussion of long-range budget forecast. And Dave has prepared and sent us all the materials for our edification, so I'm gonna kinda turn it over to him.
Hey, can I ask a question before you start? It's Russ.
No.
I mean, is it livestreamed or is it just all teleconference?
It's on YouTube.
It is? Because that's why I'm trying to find it.
Susan?
I am recording it on YouTube, I will double-check on the website, just to make sure that it is.
Takes a few minutes to get on.
All right, while we're checking, I'm gonna
Yeah, I'm just double-checking them.
Yeah, we need to get started.
It's on, it's live, I'm sorry, excuse me, it is live, we're live.
How do you find it?
Problem on your end. All right, let's go. Dave?
Wait a minute, guys, I'm on the YouTube site and I don't see it, so.
Russ, I'll send you an email.
Susan's looking at it right now, Russ, and it's on, so problem's on your end. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a memo that you have, but I'd like to just read the opening paragraph. So in overview, this is my long-range plan. So in my time, since being fortunate enough to join the East Goshen Township team as the Director of Finance, my philosophy has been to learn as much as I'm able, as quickly as possible, and talking with staff, learning the limitations of our current AMS financial system, understanding each member's responsibilities and strengths, reviewing expenditures and developing this, my initial long-range plan, has afforded me some insights and numerous questions. With a little more than a month to prepare, I decided to begin with the long-range planning template left by my predecessor, John Alsho. However, my conclusion of the current process, while sufficient in many regards, still lacks a more rigorous accounting of long-term budget solutions. In particular, my belief is that a target of five-to-ten-year balanced budget should be set, and I look forward to working to attain that goal. So with that said, I'll launch into our 2021 budget, I have re-projected using through April actuals year-to-date, looking line by line and checking anomalous issues with various payments, looking at tax payments, looking at the total year forecast. I think we're in line to hit the budget, certainly, possibly do better, but right now I'm comfortable saying that we'll hit the budget. And as part of that, I'd like to review a few 2021 items. First off, the typical plan that I've seen is using the last the last 12 full months of like 2019 projection was used for the Budget 21 Forecast. So basically, what we did on a percentage basis in each month is what was used as a monthly percentage in the 2021 Forecast. And that's fine on an annual basis, but when we wanna look month-to-month and look at some year-to-date comparisons, that's a little bit limiting, and also especially the payroll, because, you know, every month it has five payroll instead of four, we're going to be seeing these abnormal fluxes from month-to-month as we do the reporting. So I cleaned that up, and that's something that I'd like to initiate as a budget initiative going forward from my end. There was a police refund of 2020 surplus, and that's unknown at the time how that was gonna come through. It was budgeted as 2021 revenue, 220,000. It's actually just an expense reduction, so that's really just a $220,000 flip between the two buckets.
Right.
We removed a transfer from fund balance, which was put in to help balance the budget. So this includes no fluff whatsoever, we're still on target to hit this budget. So expenses were under where they were projected year-to-date, you guys will get this next week as well when we do our second and monthly meeting with the financial forecast, but using the April numbers, I feel comfortable that we're gonna hit because of expense reductions or things being deferred, plus revenue came in much better than we had been anticipating. COVID seems to be waning, vaccination plan is helping, and we're hopefully getting back to a normal forecast. In addition, I went through line by line, and this is as much a a learning exercise for me to be able to understand the AMS system, to pull all my general ledger activity, to understand whether certain payments or expenses are a timing issue, are they quarterly, are they monthly, are they a one-time event, or is it something out of the norm? So line by line, I went through to figure that out. So in that review, I also still feel comfortable that we'll hit the 21 budget. And it includes Goshen Fire with an additional 66,000 in 2022, and also the $30,000 that was the contribution increase that was approved for the 2021 budget that is all still in here. Looking at 2022 is a very rough cut. I feel confident that we will get to a balanced budget. When we have more information, we get towards closer to the end of the year, we get our actuarial estimates to determine MMO payments for WIGO. I was on a pension meeting today, I also spoke with Jim Kennedy, so I look forward to understanding all of that a great deal more than I currently do. It's an adjustment for me, but I feel confident that we'll get that under wraps as well. And also understanding how that's funded, and that East Goshen is in a particularly vantage point compared to other municipalities locally and in Chester County period. And even in Pennsylvania, really. Let's see. I've followed the typical format, so it's really looking at some inspection estimates, EIT estimates, cable franchise, really some high-level estimates that are fully put in with no, you know, it's 2022 or it's 2023 and beyond. I see a limitation in that because we really don't know if inflation's gonna jump year to year, and to expect it to increase by 2% or 3% every single year just seems a bit too conservative. Looking at that, as well as having to dig into some additional some additional data, I feel more comfortable looking at a 10-year plan in a broad term right now, understanding that this planning is necessary, but also trying to figure out how this long-term plan dovetails into the township's comprehensive plan, how does it dovetail to our dam projects, our water, our creek MS4 projects? What kind of large sewer projects do we have down the road? Mapping this out, I think, is essential. But instead of just throwing a dart to the board, I would like to delve much more detailed into this year-by-year, using our best estimates, obviously, as we move forward, but it's really shown me that a broad stroke has been used, a broad brush to paint the forecast picture, which I will be I will admit is very conservative and a bit pessimistic. I do feel that in part of this, we need a full-scale expense review. One of the concerns that I have, obviously, you can look at our expense, general fund expenses, this is the average, this pie chart shows you the average. I don't know, Susan, do you wanna pull up the chart?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if you needed me to do that, hold on, I'll share the screen.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And feel free to stop me, anyone, if you wanna talk through any of these points, or I'm just gonna give a kind of an overview as to the reason that I'm including these and wanted to call these out is this is where we're at. So this is from average 2021 through 2031. Basically, that average is 40% of our budget is police. You know, 22% is public works, 19% is administration. Now, the administration is supporting all of these other functions, but you can see, if you wanna move to the next slide? The WIGO budget is projected to out surpass every other increase that we have, and that's using 3% after 2025. I have Kathy Brill's budget in for everything up to 25, and after that, I'm assuming 3%, because they've never done less than 3% really, except this current year where we got a refund.
Dave, I just wanna make sure I'm on the right slide, are you looking at the years, because the next slide was a general fund? Okay, because I
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You're in the
Okay, so now I have the slide I have up as the annual planning session forecast for 2022 to 2031.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, can we go to the core and non-core revenue trends? Or actually go to the general fund core and debt and expense trends? Yeah, that one, you're right. So you can see all the percentages stay pretty flat, but you can see the great expense increase. So we're going from a little over $10 million from 2018, and now in 2021, we're still around that level. And using these inflationary rates and an expectation of WIGO growth, it puts us at 2031 of almost $14 million in expense. I mean, that's almost, that's between, that's like a 40% increase, which I don't see happening, but I don't know enough yet to figure out where that projection is wrong. If you wanna move to the next one, Susan, the core revenue trend, core and non-core?
Yeah, we got.
Thank you. You can see the difference here is revenue is fairly flat. We're not really projecting a great revenue windfall of any kind, I did not include any tax increases. That was on purpose because I want to show, Susan, if you wanna go to the actual forecast, line by line. If we look at this, we really see revenues flat around, non-core function revenue is around 0.8%. Now, earned income taxes are 1.5% increase over the next 10 years. However, everything else is either flat or going down, and that's a function of me setting the real estate property tax flat. We're assuming no increase in taxes, and also being conservative with the real estate transfer tax. I basically took our residential and so single-family and multiple-family dwelling places and used them as a basis, which was about an estimated 685,000 a year. And when you layer on top of that, a minimum, a minimal amount, 30,000, $50,000 a year of a commercial property tax transfer. That was my basis point for 2022. You can see in the past, we've done better, we've done worse. So that has a minimal increase after that of about a half a percent. So that was my thinking of that. Could be too conservative, but maybe not. Really, really tough to determine that one. So when I look at the different pieces of this budget and this long-term plan, it's not really a budget yet. This is my starting point for 2022. I'm really looking forward to working with Derek, my other directors. I had a talk with him on Monday about some of the items that I wanted to share with you, which is kind of my thoughts on the things that we can't control and maybe what we need to do for steps. So if I may, I'll give you that rundown very quickly.
Hey, Dave, can you hold on a second? If you're not talking and rustling papers and stuff, could you please mute your microphone so we can hear Dave more clearly? There's a lot of rustling and interference in the microphone. Thanks, Dave, go ahead.
I think that's Dave.
Yeah, it might be. Okay, so I wanted to look at some of the items that I see as my first plan of attack to try and get a handle on our budget and future year budgets. So what I wanna do is, I wanna do a full-scale expense review. I wanna throw out the question of WIGO, is there a possibility to control that growth? That's a wild card. Leaving that aside, the things that I can more control, I would definitely, and I've spoken a little bit to Derek about this already, we wanna look at existing vendors and contracts. We wanna look at long-term versus short-term, is there a possibility to save in that respect? Liability insurance, is there an option there where switching vendors might give us a better deal? I wanna network with the peers in my neighboring municipalities. As I get more familiar and start to meet more people and COVID opens up, it'd be great to see what other people are doing and what they feel their limitations are, and also compare expense rates and how much of their budget different things are. I had our meeting with our staff on Monday, tasked them with, in their regular jobs, can they identify any savings that they see? Any opportunities to consolidate, save paper, things like that? We're already cross-training jobs. And to think about needs versus wants when we're doing a budget, because the purpose of a budget to me is to set a limit on what we wanna spend. And if you put the budget in place, we should try and stay within those spending limits outside of any extraneous infrastructure damage or major problems due to storms and things like that, which always happen. But I think being conservative in a budget from an expense point will allow us a little bit more flexibility to attack some of those issues that we know are gonna come up on a seasonal basis. As well, I would like to just call a few examples of the things that I'm talking about right now. So Chris Borland actually got a check scanner, which was a $700 cost, but actually, we were paying $700 for the bank account fees that she basically got paid it back in one month of being able to scan these checks. We got DVHT savings in 2019 for two years by locking in a rate. Then there's also a payout from the executive committee based on us actually and everybody else coming in with lower insurance claims. So those are a couple options, rental notices, Amanda's thought through it and put an email in her mailer and is trying to get rid of paper there and have quicker responses, less postage coming back and forth. We're gonna review paper costs in our audit trail to maintain the audit trail, but maybe we can go with paperless stubs for payroll, maybe we can save PDFs that I can approve, and we have an audit trail instead of printing out thousands of papers, thousands of reams of papers just to sign off on and hold for accountant auditors. We'd like to review our banking fees as they currently stand. I don't 100% think that M&amp;T is giving us a fair enough shake, considering we have $10 million sitting in their system with another 1.9 hopefully to clear. We just set up a new bank account for the COVID-19 funds, which we are working on getting access to. And also our new financial system that we put out to RFP, so we're reviewing those. And the integration should increase efficiency and decrease our paper waste as well. One thing that I went through just this week with Chris was reviewing a capital replacement assumptions and calculations to try and identify what our true capital reserve fund balance needs to be. I'm, what I've found now makes me pretty certain that it's not right. And I don't know the answer to what the balance needs to be, but I know that some of the assumptions in there are very overly conservative and cautionary. And I'll give you one example, so if we were gonna replace the phone system, by now we would have saved $32,000 for it. Well, it just cost us $8,000. So that's a transfer balance that we could eliminate going from general fund to capital as soon as we know what it really needs to be. Still fully funding our capital replacement costs and any new costs that come in, but really understanding that we're doing it correctly and not putting too much away with taxpayer money that's already been collected. The new revenue look, I think we need to look at the revenue side as well as expense. This is more limited, but quickly, I'd just say I think we need to consider, I just did the sewer rate calculation. I did a fairly balanced one. I don't know if we wanna include multiple-year project, projected fixed capital costs or improvements that we can identify out and start including those in our sewer calculations, or if we just wanna keep it the way it is with variable and fixed costs based on a one-year budget. When you think about a long-range plan, you gotta think about long-range costs, and infrastructure's huge. So I would recommend that we revisit it at least and propose a couple different options to the board, which is fair and amenable to everyone in the township who's on sewer. Another option would be to review our fee schedule, are we still in line with our true costs, what is it costing us? And what are other municipalities charging for things? I have yet to dive into all of this, but that could offer some fee as well. AR issues with sewer fees. We only have about $10,000 outstanding in tax liens. And yet, our sewer fees, we're owed over $100,000. I don't know if we wanna institute a new policy where we take more action of shut-offs and things like that, or do we wanna go with a third-party route? Those are two avenues I would investigate. And then I would also consider a stormwater fee for future MS4 projects or creek water improvements. I know that's been kicked around a little bit, and it seems like West Goshen may have looked at those as well. And then further, you could look at a tax increase, but I don't, at this point, know how much. I don't know why or when we would do that. And until I determine that, I feel it's counterproductive to include that in my full long-range budget. And really just wanted to assess, here are some of the items that I think to dig into, and then let's figure out how much more we need to do. Last item I just wanted to touch on is debt. So we just finished the 2000 rate irrigation. We also have the 2003 loan with multiple projects, that finishes in 2023. And we've got the 2017, so as soon as 2023 comes off, that 2003 loan, as soon as we pay that off, then the principal payments start for the 2017 playgrounds, dams, and Paoli Pike Trail, which is why when you look at the trend, it still stays flat. So our 2017 loan actually had interest-only payments for the first few years to buy us to get to paying principal back, which starts in 2024, and with interest included is about $460,000 a year until 2037. So I don't wanna be foreboding, I just look at this as a wake-up call to assess how we actually do businesses at township, make changes over this time with forethought and planning and a comprehensive thought process in mind. That's my overview.
Hey, Dave, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My wife manages a trust that holds real estate in Philadelphia on behalf of my mother-in-law, and every year I get a new assessment, and every year I appeal it, and every year it gets turned down. It's literally gone up 25% a year for the last two years. I don't remember having a real estate assessment since I've lived in East Goshen Township. Is that a possibility, you know, to keep the same millage, but do a real estate assessment of the real estate in the township?
David, we had one several years ago, but I can tell you that commissioners are somewhat leery of doing that because of the older folks and what it means when you have an older house and you get a new assessment. It tends to go up disproportionately to the newer houses. So consequently, they're very, they're very it's leery, they're very to do it, but it's very, it's gonna be very difficult to do.
I know it's not popular, but you know, the fact of the matter, it's not popular at my Philadelphia
David, we don't have control over the assessment, the county does.
That's, that was my question, yeah.
Yeah, no, we can't do
David, the last reassessment that the county did, I believe, was in 1994, if I'm not mistaken. And that is, that is an elephant in the room for the county, it's a massive undertaking. It is a controversial one. It probably is on their agenda somewhere over the course of the next year, but it just depends on which administration is gonna take up that elephant and put it into the tent. It is, the reassessment is a big deal, and ultimately, when things are reassessed, each municipality has a limitation on how much it can necessarily increase its millage to accommodate that reassessment. So there is, there is kind of a double-layer attendant to such an undertaking, but as far as assessed valuations, the bigger concern that I have is, and what that will also do, by the way, is trigger quite a number of appeals for new assessed valuations. And that will not only flood their system, but it could potentially have an impact on the municipality. To leave things alone, I'm not necessarily broadcasting that or pushing that, but it is a big undertaking to do a reassessment, and it is, as Rick says, it's completely in the purview of the county, which sets the tone for all municipalities.
Just wanted to explore the possibility.
If I could add to that, when the county reassesses, then they actually, that trickles down to the municipality and the school district. And from a municipality standpoint, any reassessments or appeals actually then affects my position and could potentially be time-consuming on that end, too.
Yeah.
You do what Philadelphia does and just send a form letter returning it down.
Yeah, they're good at form letters, and that's a big organization, and that's the thing that we wanna try and avoid doing, obviously, in our municipality.
That was a good question, Dave, David. The other question that goes along with that is how difficult, I've gone through this, but how difficult is it to raise the earned income tax?
Can't do it, we are, we are set by Rick, correct me, we are set at the state level with our earned income tax, if I'm not mistaken, that 515 tax, my error there. I know we have a limitation, we cannot go above that rate unless there are certain circumstances where you can increase it. If we're economically distressed, there are one or two others, Chris or Dave, you might not be up to snuff on that one yet, but Chris or Rick, I know there's one or two others that allow an entity to increase earned income tax, but I know there's one or two others that allow an entity to increase uh, earned income tax, but for very um, very definite reasons.
Right.
Uh, and I'll, I'll give you one more example. Open space. You can increase the earned income tax for a dedicated open space tax. Um, East Bradford Township, for instance, did that. That's, that's the second area where you can increase it on, over the current level. And there's a third one. I, I can't recall what that one is, Derek, or one of you guys may know, but we, we are locked into that.
Uh, let me, let me say this. I, I ask that because um, a long time ago, David asked John Altsho for a flat budget. And um, we never got that. Um, my impression is that we can cut a hundred dollars there, here, a hundred dollars there. But the only way we're going to bring the budget in the line if we don't increase revenue is headcount. Well, um, we're doing that with the police department right now. If we maintain the uh, the cut of two police officers and headcount is the only way we're going to cut of the other expenses in here.
Well, there's a difference between the EIT and the real estate tax, right, John?
Oh, yeah. Well, the property tax, I, I would like to refer to it as the property tax versus EIT. Uh, obviously, real estate transfer, the, or, or they're the three big um, sources for our revenue.
Fine, but they're all flat.
Right, right. Uh, and what, if, if I can make a few points here, um, uh, Dave, um, the projections that you want to dig into, and I think a full expense review is of value. I believe what you're going to discover is that frankly, uh, short of uh, decreasing the service profile or the governmental organizational structure, i.e. uh, personnel, you're not going to have a major impact on any expense review. I appreciate some of the comments you made about um, paper and, and that sort of thing. That's good. Internally, you should be looking at those things for efficiency. Uh, needs versus wants, that is always on the, on the front page. It should be on the front page of every governing body. Uh, and that will continue to be um, um, exercised, if you will, as we go through budgets and we look at what we really need. But when you come down to the fundamental budget that we have at the moment and looking on the expense side, I think there's going to be very little um, major impact we're going to have on that. Now, when you come to the revenue side, um, the trends are flattening on a lot of municipalities, not just East Ocean as we mature. Uh, when I saw one percent for this year and then we're looking at maybe a one and a half percent EIT going forward, I frankly think that's a bit optimistic. Um, and I, I, I hope I'm wrong. But when you start to build those ten-year projections using that big num, that number, that percentage for that large revenue source, um, that is, it, it, it's a, it's a, an equation that can really disrupt and distort the long-term projections, which these ten years are very difficult. Five years, I think, is, you can get a pretty good handle on a ten years. You're really kind of grasping. That said, it's still a good exercise. I don't believe, and I, and by the way, real estate transfer, what you projected there, that's smart. Uh, I don't think you uh, ever um, uh, take on um, a, an increasing trend in real estate transfer tax. You, you maintain essentially pretty much where you are. We've had some nice surprises. Maybe we will continue to get them. They are bonuses. But I don't think you project on, on one of the biggest variables in our, on our key revenue sources. Coming down then to property tax, real estate tax, the millage. Um, there's no doubt in my mind that that's going to be the element for where we are going. If we are going to have, as you refer to it, John, as a flat budget, a balanced budget, which by law we are required to do. Uh, at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars estimate at, for a tenth of a mil, um, you look at a quarter of a mil increase. So for one and a half, one and a quarter now, we go to one and a half. We're going to build in about four hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue. Um, that is the only major source of revenue that we have available to us going forward. And now, when you look at the, the small um, list of other municipalities and you can see where they are presently, you need to understand a couple of things. When you look at someone like a Willistown, um, I forget what the other one was. It was um,
You're going.
Uh, well, it's East Whiteland and Willistown. They are part of the Great Valley School District. Great Valley School District does not have an earned income tax. So right now, those two municipalities, for instance, are collecting the full earned income tax of one percent. They're not giving a half a percent of that to the school district. And therefore, they're in for a potential coming up and it's one of these years, sometime in the next decade probably. And they're going to have to find a new source of revenue. So while their tax millage on property looks real, real um, good at the moment, that is only because there, if you gave us another half percent of earned income tax and we collected the full percent, but we're in great shape. Those projections would look wonderful. So you have to be careful looking at some other municipalities. I can tell you East Bradford Township, I left them with recommendations to go next year to one point seven five and in twenty-four to go to two mills. There's no way they can proceed any other way. You look at a West Ocean where we are now up at about two and a half mills, Derek, if I'm not mistaken.
It's two.
Two, okay. They're at two, they're seven, they are, uh, they're about a million two above us as far as if we use our one sixty point um, uh, for a tenth of a mil. They got about a million more that they're able to get out of their, their property tax if you equate it to ours. It is apples and oranges a bit because of different assessed valuations. But that said, um, West Ocean, we've often looked at as one of the financially healthier uh, and abundant townships, and they're already at two mills. There's no doubt in my mind that if we want to maintain the service profile that we have and put sewer aside and capital reserve is another element that plays into the general fund, but put the sewer fund aside. Uh, because that is an enterprise fund and it's dependent upon the, the customers. And that's where the, the fees should be based upon the, 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 the customer supporting it. Put that aside. At the moment, put the capital reserve aside, but it is inextricably connected with the general fund because it, the general fund supports the capital reserve fund. I don't know where we can go on the expense side to make up any of these currently projected deficits going forward. Uh, and I don't know any other place on the revenue side where we can pick up the necessary revenue, except an increase in property tax. And one of the things I will ask Dave to do and with Chris's assistance and, and Derek working in unison is to start to show us a few scenarios. Uh, I know I've worked them up, but show us a scenario for a phased-in tax increase with that real estate property tax uh, of say, uh, use, use point two five mills, four hundred thousand dollar increments and see where it gets us. Play it out. Well, uh, and, and give us a, a number of scenarios. You could play a scenario with, with some incremental tenth of a mil increases, but that's not where we need to get uh, within the ten-year period. That's not nearly enough. So the reality is, nobody likes it, but we accept increases all the time in, in the rest of our consumer lives uh, and don't have either a voice in it or just kind of go along with it and say, I don't have time to deal with Verizon or anybody else. Well, here we're going to get input, but if we give advance warning, uh, a notice, not warning, but advance notice sooner than later uh, to say, this is what our forecast looks. Show it. Put it out there. Let people see it. And begin to, not do PR, but do, do information education. This is the reality. We are not a, a fat government when it comes to growing government. Our staff works hard. They're all fully invested. Uh, I don't, uh, the police matter aside, John, um, and the control we have on that, we, we were having those conversations. We know arbitration takes, uh, takes us completely out of a, a position of making decision, decisions. We have to go by whatever arbitration goes, and that is the vehicle that police use now, police unions use to get what they want to continue to do. And, and as John alluded, um, attrition, there may be our only organizational vehicle to curb those costs going forward. And that's a current conversation that we're having, uh, and we're going to be having it for the next couple of years, frankly, till we get into our next, next contract. Those things aside, um, I do believe that um, uh, the forecast uh, built in with scenarios is important to put in front of the board so that we can get a, a um, a, a sense of it ourselves. And then that we start to let our residents know. Um, look, no matter what administration it is, what year it is, whether you're running for reelection, whether you're not going to serve again, to me, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I'm looking at the fundamental numbers of revenue and expenses, what services we want to continue to provide at the level that we're providing them and what we have control over spending and what we don't have much control over spending. Debt we have some control over, presuming that we don't have an unforeseen need. I, i.e. the scenario that's occurred within the sewer fund uh, with the Hershey's Mill um, emergency repairs. Um, those things can occur more rapidly, I think, in a, in a sewer infrastructure environment than perhaps in the rest of the municipal environment that involves roads. Um, in our case, dams, uh, we've addressed those. Um, MS four, uh, Dave, you mentioned uh, possible stormwater fee. Very, and I know you're new to the ship here, um, very, very controversial, big cell. You won controversy, fellow supervisors. You will get a big one there. Just go ask anybody at West, Westchester Borough. Or um, I think West Whiteland has implemented one, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know how active. Very, very complicated and we have to remember where we are on our S, MS four. These two dam projects, they are big credits for us and should accommodate our MS four permitting going forward for the foreseeable future. So that pressing a stormwater fee uh, on residents for five hundred additional square feet of um, impervious surface, et cetera, et cetera. Um, boy, um, I, I, we will have full houses for those kinds. So I'm not sure that that's a scenario where I want to pursue a, a, a revenue uh, boost. I would say this, folks, that if we do get into the property tax increase, the millage increase down the road, whether we start in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, I think we're going to have to start in twenty-three or twenty-four at the very latest. Uh, we can't draw down our general fund too much. Uh, we have our delimiters on that with our policy for fund balance, uh, maintaining of, of such. But um, I uh, lost my train there. But, but at any rate, the, these are the things that are popping into my mind and, and John, uh, coming back to your comment. Uh, expenses, I, I'm all interested in controlling, but we have to look at where we are with our governmental organization now. And um, what by dig, by potentially looking at personnel, et cetera. I'm, I'm not sure that's exactly going to be the production level we need to deconstruct the organization and the service level. Um, while probably not fulfilling the debt um, that we have looking forward or the, the out-of-sink uh, revenue uh, minus expenses that we're looking at at these projections. I don't think that's going to be uh, a productive way to go, but it's still worth doing. But um, it is, uh, the scenario I see um, is, is going forward, looking at the revenue stream and the only place to go is property tax. I know nobody wants to hear it, but that's the reality of where we are. Um, and in fact, the second-class township code, I think our ceiling to be able to increase property taxes goes all the way up to, I'm not sure, eighteen mills?
Fourteen, fourteen, Mike.
Is it fourteen? So there's a lot of latitude in our second-class code. Clearly, we're not going anywhere near there. But that's the only place to go, John. Uh, EIT, we've got no place to go there. And you can't count on real estate transfer. Uh, uh, cable is, is a minor item, not unimportant, but it's minor. The trend is down there. Um, and I will, I want to, I want to close my comments with one other point. Um, I have not been a fan of this core budget format presentation. I've spoken with the prior director of finance. Um, he indicated he was not a fan of it and that uh, it was imposed upon him. I think for someone who's been in finance, municipal finance for thirty-plus years, that being me, um, I still don't like the way it presents itself. And when we start to roll out any kind of uh, educational outreach to our residents about the, the, the path forward, um, I don't like the way that looks and I'm not going to be the one to explain net revenues and, and net expenses here. I like to see revenues. I like to see expenses and the bottom line, not this net here, net there. I don't like it. The predecessor didn't like it. I've mentioned it to Dave Ware and Chris is aware of it. And I've asked them to assess it and see whether they feel it is a viable presentation format for, and as Michelle, as you commented to me earlier in the week, um, that you liked the way Dave has presented some of the information for somebody who's maybe not as conversant in finances. Um, I think that that is a more complicated way to present to our residents, which we're going to have to be cogent in and effective. And I think it is a, it is a more complex way of showing the arithmetic, John. The adding and the subtracting. Forget this net stuff. I don't like it. The predecessor didn't like it. And so I'm letting you know that um, I don't like it. That's all I have to say at the moment. I've said enough.
Uh, let me, let me come, let me comment on that because some of what Mike said is, uh, comes in my own store view or Ricky's. Uh, one of the, one of the reasons that we have the core function budget and, and, and so forth and so on is because it's, it's, it's fairly easy to see what you need to see. Uh, without, you, the regular budget where you just do the line items is really a, a, a thing is, it's an albatross. So I would tell you that if you, if you understand what the core function budget is and what it says and what it's trying to do, then you're, you're, you're kind of, Mike, I would suspect that you might have a different opinion. Because really what it says is, how much revenue do you get for each item before you have to put your own money in? And, and that's, that's a pretty important to know. Uh, and I would also say, uh, you can, uh, for uh, of Dave's, David's, Dave's, Dave's, the capital reserve is really part of two, three, three, three things, actually. One is, we put some of the overage money in there and, and that was deliberate because we had to. Secondly, every item in there has a, a, a rate of return and three percent or four percent of whatever how it is, and it's, and it's got a lifespan of five years or ten years or fifteen years, whatever it is. If that is very, very conservative. You, and I asked John before he left, well, I didn't know he was leaving, but before, it happened before he left, to take a look at the capital reserve and see if you could pay your highest one there when it came due, if you, if you were a little bit more conservative or less conservative about, about the first, the, the second item I, I said. And, and yes, it is. You, we have a lot of money in the capital reserve that's available for use. And it's going to be used to offset the, the lack of, well, we're, we're going to have an expense problem all the way through this. Uh, you're not going to be able to balance the budget without bringing money from someplace it, or, or from a tax, it's the taxing point. I agree a hundred percent with you, Mike. I would say that if you look at this, if you take this, this, what this, this worksheet is showing about in the two thousand and five, you're, you're at the point where you have to, where you have to have a tax.
Two thousand and twenty-five, right.
Now, I, I, I would say that you're mu, from my perspective, you're better off going small and trickling, trickling along the way and get to where you want to be than you are if you have a, a rather large increase in the same time.
I agree with you. I agree with the phase.
The people can, the people can, that, it just blends into the rest of their expenses and, and you know, it's not so obvious.
I agree.
Which means now from our, 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 my time in here, we never had an income, we only had one income tax.
Right.
And that's why our people are really, you know, it's going to, the, the first time that, that this, this organization has has a, a tax increase is really going to have to explain why. And, and Ricky and I, when we wrote the letter many years, many, many years ago, uh, we, we actually did that and we had very little blowback. But if you don't explain to the people exactly why you have to do it and you're going to have to continue to do it going forward, that's just the way it is. You, you don't have construction or anything else work for you, which we had a lot of during, during the last ten, twenty years. And so consequently, I would say that starting next year, which is a non, nobody running next year, you're going to have to have some form of, 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 of tracks like Mike, Mike was talking about. And you're probably going to have two of them before you, you hit the two, two thousand and five spot. So that it's, it's, in addition to what, um, uh, Dave said. That I think it's, it's important to check all these things to make sure. But you're going to have, you're not going to be able to mess around too much with the expenses. You're not going to be able to mess around too much with the revenues because we don't, we only have one that can we can control, really control.
I agree.
You're, you're gonna, uh, it's going to be very difficult. To get, to manage the things going forward because most of the township. Effort is going to be in, in paying attention to the taxes. Paying attention to the expenses, paying attention to the revenues. Because we have fortunately or unfortunate, well, fortunately, when you have a growth theory, which is. Most of the career I had, we've had a lot of growth. You're going to have expenses that come along with that, that you're always ahead of the curve. Until the curve catches up with you.
Yep.
And then people don't understand that. And, and Mike is absolutely right. You have to have an educational program. That make people realize that once you, once you get to that built out condition. You are no longer going to be able to rely on a lot of expenses that you had before. Or a lot of revenue that you had before, because it just doesn't exist. So I, 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 for the most part, I agree with Mike, but I, I would argue vehemently about the fact. This is an easy way of presenting the data, the cost data. And I, I, I happen to be on the other side of that. And that doesn't mean that Mike's right, doesn't mean that Mike is right, doesn't mean Marty's right or Marty's wrong. It just is what you're used to and we created that thing and was of a taxing situation. And, and people could understand it. And so that, you know, we can always change it. If, if the board wants to change it, it's free to change it. And, but I would be careful. I would make sure that that's what you really want to do because that's one of the three ways. That the presets lets you present your budget.
Yeah.
That's where that came from.
And I respect that, Marty.
And that, and that's okay, Mike. I, 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 I understand what you're saying and I understand why you're saying it. I also take the other side and I, I happen to be the institutor of that, so I, I, it's, I feel, I feel like, I feel like I gotta, gotta, gotta.
And I, and I respect that.
But that's, but that doesn't mean you can't change it. So.
And fundamentally, that is. Fundamentally, that is form over the substance of what we're really talking about.
David. I think everybody has to realize that the numbers that run that spreadsheet that David did. That Dave did is, is the pass-throughs are not on there. So the numbers are the actual expenses that we incur or the actual revenues that we were anticipating. Uh, however, it comes out the next time. So there's no, there's no, there's nothing where you get, where it goes in and goes out and, and you don't pay for it. So. Uh, I think that's a very good way of doing it. Um, but I would, I would suggest that everybody is going to have to think hard about. Whether or not they want to put a small income tax in next year and maybe two years later. Uh, in order to have something to work with when you hit that, that two oh five timeframe. Which says to me, uh, you're going to have to do something. Now, the other thing I want to mention to Dave. Is, as far as I'm concerned, the balance in the budget is done because we bring money up from the, from the capital, from. Either the capital reserve or the operating fund budget. And put it in there at the beginning of the year. We, we have a deficit budget and we will have one every year. I don't see how you're going to be, how it's going to be possible to not to have one. Because you're going to spend more money than you have, uh, you have available. And if you get lucky like we have and had some of these large apartment units, uh, turnover. Uh, that, that is where we came out real ahead. But we've spent a lot of time putting, figuring out where to put the money and so forth and so on. And because we knew this day of reckoning was coming. It's just that we didn't know today. But this, what the sheet that Dave prepared isn't too much different than the sheet that Joe, John also prepared. In terms of the timeframe, so. I, I think it, it's, it's, it's kind of like now in my, even though I'm leaving. I'm still going to be a resident and I'm going to be suffering the same thing everybody else is. It's, it's a hell of a lot easier to, to, to put something that's only one or two or three percent in. In my, in the way I run my, the house as opposed to doing a ten percent or something like that. And I use, I'm using big numbers just to, to make a big difference. So there is, we are coming upon the, the time that, and Mike, Mike said it very well. That we have to do something. And better, better late, better early than late, in my opinion. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mark.
Can I jump in here now?
Yep.
Um, I, I disagree that we need to. Put, implement a tax increase before we actually need to. Um, we can, we, we don't even have a, a clear projection for this next budget. Um, at this point, and so I'm absolutely not willing to consider that. I want to see what Dave and Derek are able to come up with. Um, I would like to ask, um, Rick, if there's something in the history. That dictates how much, uh, what percentage of the operating budget. Can be in other funds in the township. Uh, accounts besides, besides the rainy day fund.
Well, our, our, back up. The operating budget is, is what we're looking at. The board elected to put money into the capital reserve account.
Yes.
Those other accounts, but there's nothing in the code that mandates, but can be over there or not be over there.
And there's no resolution that, uh, any other board had passed that said that there must be. A certain amount of money or a certain percentage in any of those accounts. Is that correct?
Correct.
This operating reserve.
All I needed to know. That's good.
And, and if, and for instance, if a board doesn't want to abide by the twenty-five percent in the operating fund or that twenty percent. They just passed another resolution.
Oh, you mean for the rainy day fund?
Yeah, there, there is no mandate.
Operating fund budget.
There's no. If you look at the bottom line of the spreadsheet, Michelle.
Yeah.
You will see a reference to a percentage of the, um, of the balance of the, uh, uh, uh. In this case, the projection shows a decreasing fund balance. And as that fund balance decreases, the percentage decreases to a, to a point. R- reflective of the resolution, which says that if the fund balance drops to twenty-five percent, below twenty-five percent, I think it is of. Revenues, uh, for the year. Uh, then the board is to, to take action to, uh, rectify that, either a tax increase or something. So that is, that is by resolution, but it is a part of, um, a good accounting practices. It's part of internal controls. It's good, it's part of fiscal management.
Sure.
And I will take exception with you, Michelle, that, um. You know, the, the, a tax increase is necessary.
I don't disagree.
You may get some finer numbers here from these guys.
I don't disagree.
You, these not, no matter what they do with those numbers. They are not, unless they create some rose colored glasses with E I T going up at a rate of four percent or five percent. There is no way that this township is going to maintain its, uh, three A. Credit rating or its fiscal, uh, management, uh, solid fiscal management. By waiting till the last minute, till the war, the ship is taking on water. And you, and you send up flares and it's too late for it to be rescued and you get into a distressed situation.
Let me tell you what's missing.
That won't happen in, that won't happen in one year.
Let me, let me tell you.
That's why you plan ahead. You don't wait. You plan ahead.
Of course, that's what we're, that's what we're doing today.
Let me tell you what's missing in this. Um. And, and we kind of possibly dodging a bullet here. And that is, we have about a, depending on how we approach the sewer issue in Hershey's Mill Estates. They six hundred to nine hundred thousand dollar issue, maybe more. Uh, the, the pumping station, uh, the numbers keep going from one point seven million to two million to, you know, whatever.
Right.
Um, and those aren't in these numbers, what, because they're somewhat offset.
No, 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 stop, David, stop. We are talking only with this budget about our general fund budget. Our principal operating fund. The sewer is a separate entity. Those stimulus funds are separate to this app, absolute number. You gotta subtract them out.
Let me finish the, the point I'm trying to make, that we dodged a bullet because of the stimulus funds coming in. What, what's missing in my mind is, and you made the point, Mike, earlier. Is that, you know, we, we've been pretty good stewards of money and thinking about how we do our curbing and roadways and so on. But the aging. Infrastructure for the sewer over the next ten to five to ten years. Can, can present us some very unpleasant surprises, uh, and we're talking millions of dollars.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Well, Chris, let me interrupt for a second, as I typically do. The sewer fund again is a distinct. Separate fund. You can't meld monies from the sewer fund with the general fund. It is an enterprise fund. It is based upon the revenue from the customers in that enterprise. Supporting the services being provided. I've talked to the municipal authority. Uh, we've talked about the capital infusion on an annual basis. That needs to be increased. We didn't even talk about that relative to the, the proposed, uh, rate increase for sewer customers. But that is absolutely distinct and will always remain distinct from the general fund. It has to, and if by law, it has to remain as an enterprise fund and completely independent. You don't legally or fiscally responsibly. Play with those two funds to accommodate one or the other, either subsidize it or fuel the, uh, fuel the general fund. Now, the, the rates, um, are going to go up in the sewer as an enterprise fund. One of the things that a lot of other municipalities have done, which still puts them into a rate. Trend profile up is they sell the system. And what's not even on the table, but I have mentioned at the municipal authority, if this, the, the sewer facility gets to be too much. And people don't want to take the rates that we're going to suggest that are necessary to maintain that, that infrastructure and that service. Well then, fine. We won't have, we don't have the resources. You won't give us the resources. We're going to have to divest and, and liquidate it, and then you'll deal with a different entity. That's a big different conversation, but it's completely independent of this projected, uh, spreadsheet. This is only the general fund, period.
And Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt just to, um, make an important announcement. Dave Ware got disconnected, so he is now listening on my cell phone on speaker. So he can speak, he can hear you, and I just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
I, I do want to say this, David, if I might, um, I, I believe this kind of conversation we're having tonight, this dialogue, which is, which is terrific. Um, is something where all of us, I think, well, I, I don't think any of us should have been surprised to see this. We've seen some spreadsheets prior that haven't all been that much of a, of a variance. And there's going to be more refinement by, by the, the finance department and, and under the oversight of Derek. Um, but we ought to, we ought to start to focus as a board to have, um, some more dedicated work sessions on this issue. Um, not just focusing on the twenty-two budget. But understanding these projections, getting them to a point of refinement. That we feel comfortable with the board and then making a decision as the governing body. As to how we want to proceed with this. Uh, but I think that there is a lot more to learn. There's more work for the, uh, finance department to do. But, um, the, I'm, I'm, I'll be amazed if in their refinements, their further, excuse me, amendments to this. That we are going to see much of a different profile. Uh, I went through the same thing at East Bradford. Uh, and, 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 and no matter how I tried to slice it. Um, I tried to be, uh, realistic on my projections, whether it was earned income tax. Uh, whether it was police, uh, expenses, et cetera. Uh, again, it, it is fluid. Michelle is right. You kind of go year to year, but you can't ignore these numbers when they are showing you a, a trend. Of this, uh, significance. If I were seeing numbers of deficits at two or three hundred thousand dollars, I'd be going, we'll handle that. But when these, when this trend is moving to the point of a million dollars. Um. In the next two or three years, next two, well, we're close enough to, even next year to a million dollars. But you, you can't ignore it, uh, and I agree with Marty. Marty and I are the same court. And, and in East Bradford, they like to do the one time, long time increases. It creates much more, um, um, dialogue with the residents. Uh, the, the residents may not like a, no different than the school district has done incremental increases to keep up. Not just with inflation, but where we need to be in these projections, refined as they may become further. But to do a one time, long time increase is a bit abrupt. It's a bit, uh, too reactive for me. Uh, it's, it's not planning. It's not thinking ahead and not selling it, but educating the residents. This is where we are. If you want us to cut a service, you want us to balance the budget. And on the expense side, what do you want us to cut? You want us to get rid of the manager, the finance department, the parks and recreation? Do we want to close the park? Do we want to, uh, cut back on our road resurfacing program? What do you want to cut back on that you can live without? Police? Good luck. We're trying. Um, I don't know where we can go on the expense side and this trend that we're seeing in these projections. You're not going to see a dramatic, uh, change in, in it. I, I, I'll, I'll bet my, I'll bet my fourth quarter. Board compensation of seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Mike. John. I, I love you, man, but a conversation or a dialogue involves everybody talking.
Go ahead.
I'm against a tax increase unless we cut expenses as far as we can cut them. And I, I could show you places where we can cut right now.
Go ahead.
Okay, please. Um, this is absurd. It goes from three point nine million dollars, uh, to. Four point four million. That's twelve point seven percent increase. If we keep, uh, the two officers out, we're going to save at least two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm right with you. We can do that, John.
I don't, I don't see why we can't. Um, the next one, uh, next column. Uh, I don't understand why the park and rec budget goes from six hundred forty-eight thousand dollars to eight thou, uh. Eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars and then back down again.
That's boat three.
For that.
It's boat three.
That relates to some of the ponds. That's a catch-all. I think, John, what we'll need.
Take it out of somewhere else.
We'll, we'll need a further breakdown. This, this is a big picture spreadsheet. And I think we are going to have to break it down into different, um, departmental. These, each of these big, big categories are going to be broken down so we can further dissect and get to, if there are cancers. With, that's the only way is we'll take this under a further microscope so we can do the most surgery on it. But we can't do it at this level with it, with this, but I'm, but I'm with you on the police is, is one example, John.
I'm in agreement with that. I thought we had the ponds covered with the, um, bond issue.
Not the ponds. I don't think ponds were in the.
Just the dam?
The dams, the dams, but not the Mary Dell ponds or the Bowtree pond, uh, you know, re, uh.
Restoration.
Well, we have five, we have except five ponds over, over time and, and, uh, as part of this, uh, Hershey's Mill Estates pond as well. It's, it's been delayed, uh, three years. So, um, yeah, we have some. We have some pond issues going forward. So that's what you see in that. Uh, it's weird because it shows up in park and rec, but it's.
But John, that would, the bond issue did not include that included sewer. It included, I guess, the trail and it included the two dams, uh, dam projects. But I, I think that was the extent of it. The, the ponds before, by the time we did the bond issue. Um, that was history and the, and the, and the, the ponds that we own, these stormwater facility ponds, these. Uh, retention basins, um, that, that came up later on in, in the discussion. So then that was discussed as to how we were going to handle those expenses. We've had the conversation this past year about cutting things to try and balance the current budget. We, we held back on Bowtree a bit. But that is not in the bond issue, uh, for those, that, those particular, um, assets.
Hey, Mike, can I just make one point on?
Yeah, Derek, good.
Expense side, and I a hundred percent agree with you. I don't think there's a magic bullet that you can get rid of and say, oh, that, that'll take care of it. We just get rid of that and, uh, clearly we're, we're in better shape. Uh, the one thing I will say is the one thing with Dave brought up with the expense review. I would really like to, uh, review, you know, contracts, third parties, vendors. I think from the expense side, I think that's probably the best area to try to save the biggest chunk of change.
I agree.
Um, so I just wanted to bring that up. I, it, it's, it's a difficult task. There's no magic bullet. But I think, you know, in a full review of the, the vendors, contracts, third parties, I think that's where we may. Be able to do, you know, something, again, not a magic bullet, but, but something to, to go towards the bottom line there.
May I ask one question about the spreadsheet? Can you point to me, uh, Dave or, or Chris? Um, where the capital contribution from the general fund. To the capital reserve fund is in this general fund budget. That's, that's how we fund the capital reserve fund, correct? From the general fund?
That is. That is correct.
Where, where is that showing up on this, this budget spreadsheet?
There's some in public works.
Uh, you've got it spread out.
Yes, again, again, what we're showing is the cost of that function.
Okay, now, see, that's where I, that's where it's important for my colleagues, let alone the residents, to see, because I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to keep referencing it, but that's a lot of my world and where I've learned some of my skills. In East Bradford, we had to make a case with our, the sustainability of our capital reserve fund, which unfortunately, East Bradford did not create a depreciation fund, a wasting fund. Smart that East Goshen has done that, very smart, um, no different than West Goshen, but East Bradford was resistant. And so we kind of went as we went along, and it was not sustainable. And we did a tax increase specifically targeted to try and sustain and maintain the capital reserve fund with the increasing pressures of infrastructure that we had. Um, but it was important for people to be able to see that and discern the difference between the general fund and the capital reserve fund, and the inextricable relationship between the general fund and the capital reserve fund. The capital reserve fund cannot exist without funding from the general fund. There's no other revenue source for it, it doesn't exist. So you, even though it's broken into this core format, I've always liked to see what is the capital reserve contribution as a nut that you see as a line item as an expense? And here it's, 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 I, I don't want to say buried, but in this format, it's generalized into these big picture categories that, again, John, we need to uh dissect and get into the micros of it uh, and see, in this case, talking about capital reserve contribution, what amount is going in to the capital reserve fund from each of these core expense categories? But that's why I asked, I didn't see it, Rick, I get it, but again, I like to see it a little bit clearer than the way it's presented in this.
Yeah, but Michael, you, all you need to do is then look at the detail that did that gets rolled up into this, this spreadsheet.
Of cour- of cour- and Rick, you're exactly right, and we, we, we were not at that point today. Today was a rollout, I, I get that.
And, and to clarify your transfer from general fund to capital reserve, if you recall, we drew down the capital reserve fund by a hundred thousand dollars twenty-twenty-one.
Right.
And the board, and, and this could change, I guess, um, determined that we would draw that down a further two hundred thousand next year.
Yeah, yes, that's right, that was part of our budget consideration to try and balance the budget. But again, all that, all the while doing those things is, and, and is, uh, you know, David's commented over time and, and, and all the board members. You know, what, what we were doing was reacting uh to the situation that is presenting itself now and showing in the spreadsheet, all we were trying to do, well, I've been, I've emphasized through the years I've been on the board, I, I, I don't like the idea of a deficit-looking budget. So balance it, show a zero balance and figure out where you're going to, if you're going to use it from unappropriated funds, i.e. the fund balance, so be it, and list it in there, unappropriated fund balance, we need this X amount to balance the budget. And again, you're drawing down on the fund balance when you do that, you're starting to cut away on your savings and your, your backdrop for the basis of maintaining a financial strong platform going forward. Somebody talked some months ago about, well, our fund balances are too high. Man, oh man, you take a look at a spreadsheet, you'll see how quickly they can diminish in a township of eighteen thousand with the services that we provide and the expenses and the cost to do it. So um, presentation is going to be everything going forward, uh, and planning, I think, is everything going forward. And response, not reaction, is everything going forward, meaning a more managed way to cut into this over time, rather than waiting till that moment where, gosh, we've closed every hole we can in, in the hull of the ship, it's, we're going down, we, it's, it's time, okay, everybody to their lifeboats. Well, I'm done.
Have um any other uh board member comments? I, I, you know, Dave, um, I think in his, it, toward the end of his uh presentation, talked about kind of actions that he's going to be taking to look at, you know, and, and Derek mentioned the, you know, the expense side. I, I happen to agree that um, I, I don't think there's a lot we can do. I mean, we're not a township that we have a hugely successful parks and recs, so we go staff it with five people, we have one person. Uh, you know, I think we've been fiscally pretty responsible uh over time, and, and, you know, we, we tend not to add FTEs just because we can, we, we add them when we need them. So I, I don't see a lot on the expense side. I, I don't see a lot of revenue opportunity, new revenue opportunity. Uh, but Dave articulated a, you know, a, a, an interest in looking at things like, I dare say at the rain tax, um, as it's the mis- the misnomer, or the open space fees and things like that, so I think we need to, we need to look at those. But those, those are going to be de minimis, I think, and, and I think the only thing we can look at is um, a responsible use of the general fund balance and the capital reserve funds and a tax and balancing those over um, how we use those over a period of time. And I, I, I happen to be in the camp that I think that we probably realistically are going to be looking at a, at a millage in- increase, and I think sooner than later. And I, and I think we can articulate it with, with what we're looking at today. Um, and the, the fact that we haven't had a millage increase in how many years, Rick?
Nineteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen years, so I don't know any service you currently buy right now that you haven't seen a, a, a price increase in eighteen years, name one. Yeah, so I, 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 I think that, um, you know,
I haven't increased my price to you guys.
That's right.
Years I've known you.
So, um, having said that,
I do, I do have a, a couple of things that I'd like to add. First of all, this um, millage was supposed to have gone away um, a couple of years ago.
Clearly it didn't.
And um, but no good tax ever goes away, does it?
Not when it's needed.
Not when, not when people rate, not when they, not when you, you use the money that's coming in. Um, you become accustomed to using it. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, Dave Ware about a statement that he made about sewer. Uh, I just, in passing, you mentioned toward the end of your um, presentation that uh, something about ten thousand dollars behind in something with the sewer, and then there's a hundred thousand dollars in owed fees.
Oh, the, those are accounts receivable from customers, uh, Michelle.
I understand, I understand that, but I wanted Dave to clarify what those numbers were for me.
Sure, can she hear me?
I can.
Okay, sorry, Michelle, um, yeah, the ten thousand dollars that I referenced is much, uh, Chester County is leaning taxes um, in East Goshen Township, so there's, people are paying their tax bills, but when it comes to sewer, there's there's over a hundred thousand, and Chris, do you know the exact number?
Uh, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand, I believe, and the ten thousand is the unpaid taxes at the end of the previous years that when, when a resident doesn't pay their taxes, we turn it over to the county. That's the tax lien that, that Dave is referring to.
Okay, so.
We are owed ten thousand dollars, which was turned over to, as unpaid taxes to the county, and the county collects that and then um, reimburses us for it.
Okay, and do they hold back any fees when they do that? Do they hold back any fees?
No, they charge an additional, uh, it's a small portion of fee, maybe five percent. They also charge the resident ten percent on top.
And that, yeah, and that's, that's standard, but Michelle, that accounts receivable under property taxes in the general fund, the accounts receivable of a hundred thousand, a hundred and sixty, as uh Chris said, is in the sewer fund. So that, that doesn't play into the general fund. Now, David also mentioned the possible third party. I've, I've mentioned it to the, to the staff before and the board, Portnoy Law Associates can do it. Uh, they're, they're professional, that's all they do, uh, we had good success in East Bradford, that's a side conversation. But that's, that's, yeah, that doesn't play
Still, I, I understand where that money is supposed to go, I just wanted to know how much it was, and is it because that, is it because, Chris, that bills just went out that were owed that much money, or is that, how much owed in, in arrears?
Hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Thousand.
That's not
There are people that have not made have been leaned or under payment programs.
I think you go into arrears after, is it after ninety days, or when do you go into, to uh, arrears, Chris?
Uh, two quarters behind.
Two quarters behind, so that's, that, that, those are historic numbers that are carrying forward. Those aren't current, every, many people have current balances that show, but they reconcile themselves.
Right, but I wanted to make sure that that wasn't a current amount that was owed today, because bills just went out fairly recently. And I just wanted to understand, was this an, 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 an arrears number? Arrears and liens, and that's what I wanted to know. I just want a clarification on that, I understand where the money goes and where, where it's supposed to be. I just under, I wanted to understand, is it current bills or in arrears, and that's what I got, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, um, I'd like to open the meeting to, uh, for any, uh, any public comment.
Go ahead, Russ, you're on, on the line, I, I know you gotta have some comments there, you've been listening intently, you have good comments, go ahead.
Well, first off, um, Dave, finance guy, uh, sounds like you got your work cut out for you. Uh, when I read your presentation before I started this meeting, I was, tell you the truth, I was really shocked at the numbers that I was seeing that you were putting out there. I thought I was one of the, one of the most residents in township to listen to uh John's presentations, and uh, this really just opened my eyes, so, good luck. And Mike, thanks, thanks for all your explanations on this stuff, it really has, uh, gave me a better awareness of what's going on here to see where we have to uh do something as far as raising taxes. Um, but I do have three questions. Um, the Hershey Mills sewer line, is the COVID money allowed to be used for that?
Yes.
Good comment on that for us.
It's Hershey Mills Estates.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, Hershey Mill, and that's, that's a good thing, okay?
Yes, that will help, that, that will help, uh, Russ.
Right, right, because that's a big project there.
Yes, it is.
Um, how many outstanding uh bonds do we have out there?
Well, present, presently, we have, really, I think there are three outstanding debt issues right now, one that will be, one, well, four, we had four. One was just um, just uh satisfied, uh, that went back some years. Uh, then there's one that's going to end in twenty-three, and then we have two larger ones, so Chris or, or Dave, uh, perhaps you can, or, 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 or Rick, and I, and I'm not keeping you out there, but you're, you know, since you're, you're just getting your feet on the ground. But, but we have two larger ones that, that have a, a longer horizon, I think the one goes to thirty-seven. And I'm not sure where the other one goes to, Chris or, or Dave.
But the interesting thing, uh, if the total, total debt service in the, in the projection, it's one of the things that kind of flatlines over time.
Yes, yes.
Turity of those kind of overlap over time, so it's not an increasing uh expense amount, so it doesn't impact the, the budget in an increasing kind of way over time, in fact, it goes down a little bit.
It's not, it's not, Russ, it's not an over, for a municipality the size of East Goshen, um, it's not an overwhelming tax burden, uh, and there is a law, uh, the debt, debt unit, unit debt act that, uh, what, that, that, there's a formula essentially that says how far a municipality can borrow before we possibly get into trouble, but, but there, there is outstanding debt that we're going to continue with. And who knows, uh, Russ, over the next decade, whether we're going to need to, again, if you look at a school district as an example, there, there is a continual cycling of debt uh, over the years, uh, but, and, and it's no different many times in our own households. We continue to use debt as a vehicle to move ourselves forward, it, it creates a burden on our cash flow, but if it's managed properly, you can, if you will, have your cake and eat it too. But there's no free ride, so it does play no different than the national debt. Um, it, it plays, it plays in there, it's an important element that cuts into every dollar of taxes.
Okay, um, now, the, the, my last question, I was a little, I know this is going to be one that nobody wants to hear the question about, but the trail that we're putting in, and believe me, I was one, at the beginning, was really opposed to this trail. But I have changed my mind in thinking about this trail. Uh, but is there any money that we have to physically put out of our coffers to pay for this trail? And would that not account for early on in this projection of putting that trail in?
Rick, why don't you comment on that from your knowledge base?
We use bond fund proceeds to fund the engineering and right-of-way acquisition for bulk of the trail.
Correct.
And so the only segment left is segment B, and
Right.
We're, so we will, we be applying for grants in July, November, are the two big ones, and there's some smaller ones that we'll be also applying for throughout, in this year. But being, not being constructed unless we get, you know, three, three, three and a half million dollars worth of grant money.
And, and Russ, if, if, if that scenario plays out as Rick is talking about, and it is, it is, um, the, the trail is standing, uh, in, understanding, uh, you know, some of the, the differing views that we have amongst the board members on the trail, uh, to try and complete it or not. Um, the existing money in the bond fund designated for the trail associated with a right-of-way acquisition and, um, and engineering, um, there is enough dollars estimated in that bond fund, uh, that allocation to cover those expenses going forward, or at least very close to it, the most recent estimate, I think John Altrall had last year, uh, looked like we were ahead by eighty thousand dollars if things worked out well. I think we since spent that because of a contingency, uh, and we're going to have a few others, but overall, um, there are, there is adequate dollars, as I understand it, in that portion of the two thousand and the two thousand seventeen bond fund, uh, uh, bond issue that we had, whatever the number was, to cover those. However, it is, that is standing on the fact of, of whether we get grant funds or not. If we don't get grant funds, we don't have the money to do it, and that will bring it to a standstill irrespective of, of governing body uh, positions on the, on the, uh, on the trail a, as we stand at this point in time.
Um, Russ, I'd like to also answer that question. Um, at, at this point, we're supposed to have been paying two, approximately two point four million dollars for, of the trail of our portion, the township portion. We're slightly over budget, we have an archaeological dig that we have to consider, that's seventeen thousand four hundred dollars that was if that archaeological dig finds anything, then there's another dig. Uh, we still don't have the permit until that dig is done, we don't have the land until that land um, situation has been negotiated. Um, there are costs involved with acquiring the land that are not covered at this point, as we're over budget, and there are um, potential uh, costs that are associated with acquiring that land, um, that again, are not covered. So they can't be recuperated by grants, they can't be recuperated by any, um, but anything, any bond, or anything, that we've got to cover that, the township is on the hook, all of those expenses. Does that equal, your guess is as good as everybody else's, Russ?
Yeah, right, yeah, right. Uh, Michelle, I agree completely, there are some definite contingencies that we're facing in the short term here as to what those numbers are going to be, and Michelle is right, those, I'm glad you mentioned that, Michelle, because they are going to exceed what we have in the bond fund, whether it's a hundred thousand, whether it's two hundred thousand dollars, and then we're going to have to figure out if we're going to proceed as a, as a township with, with, of, of doing that work and paying for it, as to where those dollars are going to come from, we're gonna, we're gonna draw from our capital reserve fund um center. So those will be uh incising discussions and decisions uh as we approach, and some of them are going to be incremental. We're, again, as Michelle mentioned, this archaeological dig that we're now required to do a phase, it's the phase two study now, we're actually digging, I'm not sure it's phase one, but i- if it shows something of significance, then there's going to be further uh requirements for us to do that there on the
This is phase one, phase one, and, and if we have to go to a phase two, then it's a much broader, uh, deeper um, more expensive that adventure. Have to cover.
Right. Any other questions from the public?
Uh, can I ask one more thing there, uh, David, please?
Sure, Russ.
Uh, Mike, you were talking a, a long bit of time about the millage tax on the, the property tax. Am I understanding that that's a pretty, pretty small amount of money that we have to pay every year, isn't it?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you have, uh, presently now, if you have an assessed valuation of, say, I don't know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're paying approximately three hundred dollars, if I'm not mistaken, in, in your property tax. Uh, Chris or Dave, if you know those numbers, i- if you have an assessed valuation of about a quarter of a million dollars, you're paying about three hundred dollars in um, in property tax under our one point two five millage rate. you're paying about 300 dollars in um, in property tax under our 1.25 millage rate.
Right, and that's, and that's what I kind of thought, but the, I guess the thing is, why? I'm not like one of two people listening to this Zoom meeting right now. How do you get this to be pres- presented out to the general public of East Goshen? The, how insignificant this tax is? I mean, I don't want to throw money out every day, but for what we need to do, that's such a small fee that we have to pay to live here.
Well, Russ, that's, that's a very interesting perspective and I appreciate you sharing that. First of all, on the elements related to public input, public interest, public um, uh, interest in uh joining into the process. Uh, that's always a challenge for municipal governments, whether it's, whether it's a tax increase or whether it's a, a project. Um, many times the ones that bring out the folks the most have to do with um changes in land use and property uh immediately or in the vicinity of where they live. But taxes, um, the only thing we can do is put out our message both on public meetings uh and in through newsletters and through the website, invite people to participate and comment. And then, um, I, 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 I know my prior life, we did that, we had, uh, and, and it was amazing that we had a couple of tax increases while I was there. And uh, when it came to time for November and December to have people show up at the budget uh preliminary and final approval in those two months at the end of each year for the new year, we hardly had a soul show up. And it was only until, uh, it was later on in March or April that we would get, um, in our case in East Bradford, I would get maybe 15 or 20 calls or emails and people would go, oh, I just got the tax bill or I just saw my escrow statement from my mortgage company. Well, last year it was 200 dollars, this year it was 300, why, what's going on? I said, well, go back, look at the, look at the website, look at the minutes, look at the communication. We've been talking about it every month for the last year or more. And here's, here's the reason it increased. Most of the time when I had those conversations, people kind of went, oh, okay, well, and as you have said, um, gee, you know, we appreciate where we are, the services that were being provided. Um, whether you're on a fixed income or not, we're, we're, we're doing all right here relative to a lot of the rest of the stuff in the world that we do pay for. And some of our, our neighboring municipalities are struggling with the same kind of challenges. So I appreciate your perspective, but that's the way we're going to get the message out. And particularly if we roll the message out, not over a two month period, a three month period, but we roll this message out over the course of the next year plus routinely. Uh, newsletter, kind of include an article that says, here's where we are in our budget process and forecasting. Here, be aware.
That, that's true, that's true, Mike, but I would like to see Chris and Dave um send a new uh, an increased.
Yes.
Bill to Russ Frank uh immediately. Pay his taxes right away, okay?
But I, again, just thanks, I want to thank everybody for uh listening to me pontificate.
No, I, I, we really appreciate your input.
Uh, it's 8:45 and uh, I'm, I'm not, I, I view this as a single purpose meeting. Um, uh, but I'll, I'll, at, at risk of extending the meeting, ask, does anyone have any other matter that needs to come before the, a public meeting? I will.
But Mr. Chair, I would like to comment that Dave Ware has only been here a month and I think that hit the ground running and really wrapped his hands around uh East Goshen Township and everything, all the aspects in order to pull together an amazing uh forecast and projection, so.
Thanks, Chris, and thanks for your help.
Yes, and you've been a good mentor and with Derek and Dave and Chris, you guys are going to be a good team.
As well in that process, so I appreciate your comments, so. Uh, I will.
Mr. Chair, may I move to adjourn?
Mike seconds, all is in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, no, thanks, everybody, good dialogue.